All right, everybody. Welcome to the March 18th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we'll start off with a moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence? If not, I do. So I'll read this for Robert Patton, born December 27, 1942, and left us on November 25, Robert died in suddenly leaving many parts of the Laserna community bereft. He was a wonderful example of how a retired person can care for a community. He created the Laserna Community Garden with the help of Flow, Friends of Locally-Owned Water, building long, high garden boxes hauling dirt and chicken manure, pumping water from the lake into the holding tank so that gardeners could water their flowers and vegetables. Robert loved nature and took beautiful and large photos of the lake's wild birds. In partnership with the Audubon Society to prevent injury to birds and fishes, he created tubes for collecting used fishing line and hung them at boat launches around the lake, emptied them regularly, and sent them to be recycled. At the monthly fiddler's jam at the Ely Stage Stop, Robert would dress up in overalls and a straw hat to drive the hay ride for the kids. For several years, Rob pumped water from the lake and hauled it to the Laserna Senior Center to water the Memorial Rose Garden. Always wanting to offer help, he picked up food in Laserna and delivered it to several needy people. He finished a neighbor's poorly constructed ramp and added non-skid strips. Robert was also a musician with a beautiful singing voice. He played guitars with friends every week for years. He was a very special person and has left large holes in many hearts and lives. His beloved dog, Tiva, is now living with his good friends Willie Dog and Karen. Robert flew free. He left behind his daughters Cheryl Klosser, Kathy Patton Black, grandchildren Christina Klosser, Adam Black, Zachary Klosser, Ian Klosser, and great-granddaughter Clementine Quincy Klosser. He was preceded in death by his grandparents Howard and Evelyn Patton and his granddaughter Bethany Klosser. All are welcome to attend a celebration of life on Saturday, March 29 at the Laserna Alpine Senior Center, 3985 Country Club Drive at noon. There'll be food, and people may bring a dish to share. Vice Chair Rasmussen, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any?
We do not.
We do not, okay. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial items that can be pulled, but they're all passed in one motion, but they can be pulled for further discussion. It looks like we have one so far pulled for a future date, 5.9. Are there, so anyone from the board can pull and everyone, anyone from the public can as well. So anyone from the board want to pull consent agenda item? Or open it up to the public? Anyone from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as proposed with the exception of 5.9.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we have timed items, 6.1, public input. In public input, you can come up and speak for three minutes if the item is not on the agenda. Just know that when discussed, none of the Board of Supervisors can comment at this time. However, we can connect you at a later time or date with either the director or the supervisor that's in your district. Is there anyone that has any public input at this time?
Nice.
Did she fill out a form? All right, not hearing any, any on Zoom? No. All right. Go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm Betsy Khan, the founder of the Essential Public Information Center in Lake County in 2005. Due to the fact that I have been a supporter of the county's clean water program since 2003 and served as the environmental restoration subject matter expert on your Clear Lake Advisory Committee for three years, I am deeply familiar with the capacity gaps in our proactive county government and the understanding of operational weaknesses that resulted from the reorganization of the Department of Water Resources in 2010. For those who are attending today's meeting online, I wrote a letter to our board yesterday that explains the advantages and needs for empowering the Lake County Watershed Protection District. You will find a hyperlink to that letter itself on the published agenda for today's meeting. My letter makes practical recommendations to your board to take on behalf of our shared public assets, that those that are necessary for achieving Vision 2028 countywide objectives and coordinating those changes with the next Lake County general plan. Thank you for providing the opportunity for members of the public to work together with you and each other toward our collective well-being in these very difficult times.
All right. Thank you, Betsy. Any other comments on Zoom? All right. Bring it back to the board, and we'll move on to our next item, which is Pet of the Week. And we have Mr. Francisco Palayo.
Yes. Good morning, everybody. All right. You want to hold? Today, we have Sugar. She's a four-month-old, and she weighs 10 pounds. Sugar has had a rough start. When she first came to the shelter, her and her brother were both covered in ringworm with no fur. Soon after that, they were actually diagnosed with Jardia as well. And there are two months in the shelter, they have been treated and medically cleared to be, by the vet, to be adopted. Sugar's brother has found a forever home. Let's help find a sweet, this sweet baby a forever home as well. If you're interested in Sugar, please come down to the Lake County Animal Care and Control at 4949 Hellbush Drive, or give us a call at 707-263-0278. Yeah, she, she's ready to go to a forever home. Yeah. Ready? Are you sure you don't want her? Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Francisco, I think she.
Do you mind stopping by admin?
Oh, yeah, I can.
They're trying really hard here. All right. All right, so we'll move on to our next item. 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of March 2025 as American Red Cross Month. And it looks like Vice Chair Rasmussen will be conducting this proclamation. Oh, yeah, and Supervisor Pyska.
So proclamation designating March 2025 as American Red Cross Month in Lake County. Whereas we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Lake County and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers and supporters who have given back through the American Red Cross California Gold Country region remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. And whereas their voluntary and generous contributions shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, whether it is responding to a home fire in the middle of the night, providing shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, or saving lives with first aid, CPR, automated external defibrillator devices, and other skills. And whereas, as an organization that supports people at their most vulnerable time, the Red Cross is committed to helping Lake County families cope with increasingly frequent and intense disasters. The Red Cross Community Adaptation Program partners with hyper-local organizations to provide essential services and make strategic investments. These efforts grow capacity and adapt the Red Cross disaster mission to help families and communities better cope with the humanitarian crisis caused by the climate crisis. And whereas together, our efforts enhance the work of existing Red Cross volunteers by ensuring they are well-prepared to meet community needs. This collaboration, especially through partner relationships in times of disaster, makes volunteer contributions even more impactful and strengthens the overall project. And whereas this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it is needed, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service and ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors proclaims March 2025 as Red Cross Month in Lake County and encourages all citizens to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Passed and adopted this 18th day of March 2025 and signed by the Chair of the Board, E.J. Crandall.
It is such an honor to have you here once again to celebrate you and your commitment to our community. So I know some of you have been volunteering with the Red Cross for a very, very long time, and you're maybe on your fourth email address, is that right? So, you know, as we all know, we've relied on, on the Red Cross in Lake County through multiple, multitude of disasters over the years. But what's really incredible is we have the Climate Adaptation Team here, which we are a very select few nationwide that have a permanent, full-time team embedded in our county. To do that proactive work to lessen the effects of disasters and any impacts year-round that we're seeing in our community. So I just want to make sure everyone is fully aware that we have that team here, and it's been a couple of years now. Is it this year?
Almost three years.
Almost three years, right. So again, we had to go through a lot to get it, but we're making a difference. The resiliency hubs around the county, preparing communities at the community level to respond to their friends and neighbors, getting them the tools to do that, making sure they have facilities that could be stood up even when the power's out. But the most critical thing that we have is the COAD, which is upstanding now, and that's community organizations active in disaster. And we didn't have that in 2015 when we started having all of our disasters. And we didn't have any blue sky time until just the last three years. So having the COAD, which I'm sure Shannon will be able to explain more, organizes all of our community organizations that can activate immediately when we have a disaster. And this last summer was the first time that the COAD was activated a few times. So again, I'm deeply grateful to the Red Cross for embedding this team and for all of the volunteers that always show up and always get deployed to disasters around the country.
All right. I will say a word about the COAD. Jessica, thank you, Supervisor. The, the reality is, if you look at back to 1980, then you would see that in the United States, we had an average of three or four billion-dollar disasters. Last year, we had 27. The year before that, we had 28. And from 1980 to now, it has been a constant trajectory upwards. This is not unusual anymore. This is the new normal. And as these disasters increase, we don't see the capacity of national, federal agencies to be able to come in and provide the support and resiliency that we need. So the goal of organizations such as the COAD, Community Organizations Active in Disaster, is to work with local partners and to remind us that we are our own saviors. We, in this community, are the ones that can make a difference for our community. And when we bind together, we are the ones, hyper-local in this place, that are going to provide the resilient opportunities for our community to be made whole in each of these disasters as they've increased and as they continue to. So it's very exciting in our COAD right now, we have over 35 different agencies. So we are excited that the work is happening. And Tammy actually just became the new Chair of the COAD, as I pass it over to her. So we're excited that she's here. And also, I would like to introduce to you Lauren Timian. Lauren is our new CDPM, that means Community Disaster Program Manager. While our team is working with local partners to increase your capacity, it's Lauren's job to make sure that our whole community is ready when disaster comes, to set up the shelters, to work with Department of Social Services back there, Rachel, we see you, to set those shelters up. So the last thing that I would like to say is that you too can be a volunteer in the Red Cross, either to serve here in this community when disaster happens, or when you hear news like what happened in Oklahoma this weekend where over 40 people were killed due to the storms. So you can go to www redcross.org and sign up as a volunteer, again, just to serve in your own community or to go to others as others have come to us. And is there anything anyone else would like to say?
Come on down.
All right, all right. Thank you so much for having us today.
Yeah, I'd like to just give a shout out to you all for all the work you've done. I know that at the Laserna Alpine Senior Center, when I first started out as supervisor, they had a lot of challenges when it came to that center. Just with all the help that you've provided, having the COAD meetings there, they have become a more sought-out beacon on the North Shore. Anytime there's a disaster, especially the Glen Haven Fire where they were more, they were more prepared, or not more prepared, but they were more equipped, that's the word. And it's with the help of you all. So again, and then the other fires that we had, I know there was one in Clear Lake, I mean, just, there's so many, but just being able to call on you, you know, at night, and even though it's nighttime, but helping folks out. So, thank you.
Our next COAD meeting is in Laserna at the Senior Center on April 16.
Okay, I have my, I'm on notice.
You've been invited. When we have disasters, it doesn't take one agency to help and provide the assistance that people need. People are in panic mode, people are in high anxiety, there's just a lot going on at that time. And we talk about it often during our regular days about helping our law enforcement and first responders with force multipliers, but you are the force multiplier during our emergencies. You are organized, you understand the process. I think we had to learn your process. I remember in 2015, it wasn't exactly a smooth operation, but I think our expectations were just unknown as to how we would work with the Red Cross. And I have seen it work better and better each time, unfortunately and fortunately, but have great appreciation for the work that you do and your entire team. Thank you.
Is there, well, is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak?
Sorry to delay your photo op. I'm Rachel Dillman Parsons, Social Services Director, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you so much for all you do in our community. We are small. Social Services is tasked with sheltering, and Red Cross comes in and saves the day. Frequently, they make our job easier. So thank you, thank you for all you do.
All right. Post-public input. All right, 6.4, Presentation of Proclamation Designating March 18 through 24, 2025 as National Agriculture Week in Lake County. And Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Sabatier will be presenting this proclamation.
Please come on up. Welcome back. Good morning, everybody. Today's proclamation is designating March 18 through 24, 2025 as National Agricultural Week in Lake County. Whereas California is a national leader in the farming industry with its production of over 400 different commodities and contributing over $50 billion, that's very distracting. I had to pause. And contributing over $50 billion in high-quality food, fiber, and flour products annually. Over a third of the country's vegetables and two-thirds of the country's fruits and nuts are grown in California. And whereas Lake County has a long and rich agricultural history, starting in the 1850s when early settlers planted the first vineyards, followed in 1890 with the planting of the first Bartlett pears, crops, crops, excuse me, crops have flourished in our fertile valleys and hillsides and ecosystems that were fostered and stewarded by the local Native American Pomo tribes for generations since time immemorial previous to 1850. And whereas today, Lake County's agricultural industry continues to be a vital economic engine, providing jobs and contributing to a strong tax base, bringing more than $135 million in value of its major crops of pears, wine grapes, and walnuts, as well as an increasing contribution of olives, nursery, livestock, feed, and seed crops and vegetable crops. And whereas, Lake County's farmers are stewards of the land, contributing to the health, beauty, productivity, and quality of our county's water, soil, air, and forest resources for the benefit of all California and Lake County residents. And whereas, Lake County's agricultural industry fosters a deep caring for the land and our community, contributes to our local economy, ensures the production of safe food, gives back to local charities and organizations, supports our way of life, and continues to embrace education and scientific knowledge to further agricultural advances. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate March 18 through 24, 2025 as National Agricultural Week in Lake County, and celebrates the achievements of the more than 1 million people who worked throughout the year in Lake County's and California's number-one industry. Passed and adopted this 18th day of March 2025 and signed by our Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Julia, you should come on up here. Come on. Yeah, because you're a farmer in Lake County, what the heck? Yeah, get up here. I just wanted to say thank you for the board for taking time to recognize National Ag Week in Lake County. Agriculture remains a very vital part of not only our economy, but our community and our culture here in Lake County, and it's important to continue recognizing the hard work that our farmers and ranchers put in every day and, and what they contribute to this community. It's less than 1% that feed our population, and it's really hard work, so those people deserve all the recognition that they can get. And we thank you for joining us in celebrating National Agriculture Week. Anybody else?
And I, I think it's incredible, how many generations of women do we have up here today? That's right. Yeah, and I, you know, we've all been through ag venture. So the program is really important to expand the knowledge to the leaders throughout the county so that we know exactly what, how important the ag community is and the role they play in our community and our economy and our culture. And I always remember that if you eat something, if you wear something, you need to thank a farmer. And I think Sharon should probably give a couple of words, too. Come on up here. Come on, Sharon.
Excuse me, thank you. I just want to promote California Women for Agriculture. We are a 50-year-old nonprofit group with members from both, from north to south, and we promote, educate, and advocate for California agriculture. Rebecca mentioned that 1% of the population feeds the 100% of the population, not just here in California, throughout the United States, but throughout the world. So it's important to support agriculture and to keep the, being upstaged here. So as you eat two or three times a day, remember, thank a farmer. Thank you.
Just really quickly, also wanted to thank our young agriculturalists, our 4-H members who took the time to join us today. Youth is a very important part of any industry, but especially in agriculture. We like, we like to educate and give our youth opportunities to participate in the community. So just wanted to thank them for joining us here. And do any of you want to say anything? Okay, great. Thank, thank you for joining us.
I'll say something. I think that the Future Farmers of America, the FFA, and the 4-H program really keep this, keep the agriculture alive in, throughout the state, but in Lake County. So at our county fair, don't forget to come down and support our future farmers and our 4-H kids. This is the backbone of America, and they are what keeps us going.
I just want to quickly thank everybody in our agriculture community in Lake County. Agriculture has a rich history here and is a huge part of our economy. And thank you for everything you do, as well as all the agencies that support agriculture. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? All right, Sam, I think it's picture time.
We have, we do have someone.
I didn't see him. Behind Bruno, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everybody who was here today. I don't think that there's been a point in my lifetime where the production of food and having food security was in so much of a question and so important to everybody. So with that, and the board, and all the support we have here, I think keeping in mind how to help generate more farmers coming up and giving them the space and place to do that, I think is really important. Taking into account climate change and all these different things, they have to evolve, and we have to evolve. So I appreciate everybody taking the time to make this important. And, you know, once in your life, you need an attorney, twice in your life, you need a doctor, and every single day, three times a day, you need a farmer. So thank you.
All right, it's picture time.
I'll stand up when I hear.
There. Thank you. Oh, here, here's a good spot. Oh, that's a good one. Come on over here. Yeah, here's a good spot for it.
Remodeling.
Oh, that's great.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, 6.5. Presentation of proclamation designating March 2025 as Women's History Month in Lake County. And Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Owen will conduct.
All the women in the room, please come up. This is an amazing showing.
If you need to, you can stretch on down this way. Up to you.
Come on back, everybody.
We got room, we got room, keep coming. Thank you. There you go. Well, this is an amazing sampling of a fraction of the incredible women that are in leadership throughout our county, but I am honored and delighted to pass the microphone to past Supervisor Brumfield, who is a legend in her own right.
I was first elected to the Board of Supervisors in 1984, and then back in 1988, and two years ago, I got married, so I have a different last name now. But here is the proclamation from the Lake County Board of Supervisors, designating the month of March, 2025, as Women's History Month in Lake County. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, women, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas, American women are particularly important in establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the labor, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been constantly overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate March, 2025, as Women's History Month in Lake County, passed and adopted the 18th of March. It was my pleasure to serve on the Board of Supervisors, and I am thrilled that we have two women again serving on the board, providing, providing an understanding of a perspective that sadly, some men don't experience, but you guys do. So thank you. Thank you all.
Representation matters, and the more women that we have in leadership from all different types of backgrounds, the better we can serve all of the people in our county, in our state, in our communities, in our country, and in the world. And I, I just want to express to you my profound gratitude for each of you stepping up, for all the women that are, I know there's some out on Zoom, and I know they're all working today, and they couldn't take a minute to come here, but you all matter, and your work matters, and it shows every day when you all show up. So thank you.
It's a blessing to stand, this is too much, man, I love it. It's a blessing to stand on the shoulders of a lot of women who had a lot less than we have today. I think of my grandmother, who couldn't have her own bank account. Education was not something women have had access to in the United States. We take the pledge of allegiance, but in fact, in the United States, not all people are equal. And so I am grateful to be in a position of leadership and to serve as a model for other women, what it looks like to be strong and confident, particularly young women. And I am honored to just be able to serve. Thank you.
All right. Someone coming? The microphone, no? All right, can we check the Zoom room and see if we have anyone in the Zoom room who wants to speak? No hands up? Okay.
Jessica, do I have to come up there? Can I just shout?
No.
No, you have to go up. You have to go up there.
We have to make it on the record.
I just really quickly wanted to say, being a woman is often talked about as being a disadvantage, and I personally don't partake in that thought. I think that being a woman is, gives us a little bit of a superpower, and I'd like to empower other people to take that same mentality, because it doesn't have to be a disadvantage, and you know, get out there and do all that you're capable of.
And we definitely want to give thanks to all the men who support the women.
Yeah, you have to. You too, Johanna.
Right behind you, John.
I see you, Wendy.
So I know we have a couple more items, but I'm going to go ahead and just pause
for a short break. Five minutes. All right. Back from our break here, we'll move on to our next item, our 6.52. Radam, 9:15 a.m., consideration of the distribution of excess proceeds in the amount of $1,116,250.39 from tax-defalted land sale number 161, held May 26, 2023, per Revenue and Tax Code 4675. And our treasure tax collector, Pat Sullivan, is here with Mrs. Gonzalez.
So Treasure Tax Collector Patrick Sullivan, I'm here with Elizabeth Martinez, our Assistant Treasurer.
I said your maiden name, didn't I? No? Oh, sorry.
Assistant Treasure Tax Collector Liz Martinez. I'm going to turn the presentation to Liz.
Good morning. So this morning, the item that we bring forward to you is the distribution of excess proceeds from our tax sale 161. This tax sale was held May 26 of '23. From this tax sale, there was 109 parcels that had excess proceeds for a total of the So of these excess proceeds, $784,913.49 have been requested, and we have determined to be valid to parties of interest. The remaining balance of around $331,000 for the unclaimed would be going to the general fund. As far as the parties of interest and the way that those claims are filed, the first priority are lien holders of record. They have prior recordation of a tax deed to the purchaser in order of priority, and then the second would be anyone that held title on the property. So it would be based on their proportionate share of ownership.
I was just going to add a few other points about the process here. This is a change from the way we have previously done it. In this circumstance, we did notify all parties in advance of this proceeding with a 45-day notice. We have not received any sort of notification that anyone is planning to contest this, but I would ask, I guess I would ask at this time if there is anyone present that plans to contest one of these findings, either in person or on Zoom, if that's possible to clarify before we go forward.
Yes, is there anyone present that would like to provide input or anyone on Zoom? All right. There's no one here. Ma'am, if you can come, if you can come up, please, yes. So we need you to speak into the microphone and state your name.
We're here because we have one of the claims in for the excess proceeds for tax sale.
And one point that I would ask is, maybe this for county council, we have not done the proceeding in this manner before. I'm not clear whether people should be sworn. If this is to be treated as a hearing, we did notice it, it's considered a determination under Revenue and Taxation Code, which we have not previously conducted.
So it is a bit of a new procedure, reading through 4675. I mean, that is an option for your board if your board wishes to just take in this swearing in.
We'll go ahead and do it, yes. Johanna, if you can help us with that, please.
So if you're going to speak on this item, and you're in the chambers or you're on Zoom, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. And then, I'm not seeing any, so with your right hand up, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. And so...
Yes, say yes.
Yes. Party hearing.
All right, so Pat, you think I should, they're good to talk now?
Yes.
Okay. Ma'am, if you wanted to go ahead and state more of what you wanted to say about this item, or did you already say what you wanted?
Well, yeah, I was just saying that we were parties in the, of the, one of the claims that we presented.
Okay.
We weren't sure what, what we needed to do, and we just received a letter saying to be here at the meeting.
I think we would ask at this time if you could identify which claim you're appearing on and your name, and if you're, I'm not clear, are you contesting our finding?
No, we're not contesting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So you support it?
Yes.
All right. Okay, well, then, I think his main concern is if there's anyone that wants to contest it. So if you don't want to contest it, then, okay. Oh, but yeah, you still have to give your name if you can.
No, it's Mark Carlisle. He's hard of hearing, he doesn't...
Okay.
So it's Mark Carlisle.
Okay. And your name?
Marilyn Edman.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all we need.
Thank you.
What I would add as well, just for further background on this process, is we did, we did the notification 45 days ago, but people have up to one year after the tax deed is recorded to file that claim. So usually, the tax deed is recorded within a few months after the sale ends. So we accepted these claims for up to a year after. At that point, we then began our investigation, reviewing each claim, going through it, and determining who should be paid and at what amount. And I would just note, that's why this appears a few years later. It takes sometimes two to three years because of, because of that wait time, and because it can be stopped by rescissions or other actions where we have to further delay. That's why you're seeing this now, two years later. I just wanted to clarify why that's occurring. There is one claim on here that I know someone sent letters to your board regarding, and that was TV Fallop. And I'm not sure the new board members received this letter in the past, it may have been before your time. I just want to highlight why we are awarding it to the claimant. And for background, the claimant wanted the check issued under her name, but she had moved the property into the name of this company called TV Fallop. It's an LLC that was formed in California. After she recorded and moved the property into the name of the company, it remained there until ultimately the sale occurred. It was never moved back into her name. The claimant has requested that the check be issued in her name. We do not have the authority to do that because she moved it into the company's name. So I'm aware she has sent letters to board members in the past and has disputed that, but we have not heard from her following this notice stating that she would appear today, and that was one of the concerns. I just wanted to ensure that she is not here contesting it, and it sounds like we have addressed that. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the board?
For the record, I have no notice of receiving any dispute on that particular claim.
I don't remember getting anything. Thank you. Just wanted to speak at least on the gentleman that approached the microphone. I do see him in there, looks like he's getting the full payment of what was available to claim, and so everything looks simple and easy enough. Just wanted to at least clarify that and make it clear.
All right, with that, if there's nothing else, I think we just move forward with the action, right?
I can make, I can make a motion.
Let me see, is there, is it a resolution or a motion?
It would just be a motion to approve.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's a motion.
Make a motion to approve the distribution of excess proceeds in the amount of $1,116,250.39 from tax-defalted land sale number 161, held May 26, 2023, per R and T, Section 4675.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our 6.6 has been pulled for a later date, a future date, so we're going to go ahead and close that out and move on to our untimed items, and we're going to start out with the 7.4, consideration of update on accomplishments and conclusion of Cannabis Ordnance Task Force. Oh, Lloyd, sorry.
So Director Turner is here, I wasn't sure if she wanted to speak on item 6.6, the one being pulled or the next.
Oh, okay. I'll go back to 6.6 real quick, and we'll let...
We need to wait till 10?
Oh, yeah, we would need to wait till 10, so we need two minutes.
I can fill that moment. Thank you. On that previous item, yes, we do appreciate the board carrying this item over to a future meeting. If we could get a time...
Do I have to wait till 10 exactly? We have to wait till 10 exactly, so now we're at, yeah, we're two minutes. Let's see. I don't think there's anything on.
7.3 is real fast.
Is it? Do you think? 7.3?
I would suspect.
All right.
Anytime that's convenient for you.
Okay, 7.3, consideration of replace one at-large member on the Middletown Laypack for one agricultural representative and to appoint of members, appointment of members to Middletown Laypack.
Thank you.
We're just going to knock that out real quick.
Oke doke. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. There are currently two vacancies within the Middletown lower, let me just read it all out, Local Area Plan Advisory Committee, or Laypack. These vacancies exist in the environmental category and the at-large category. Supervisor Owen has advertised or let people know about these vacancies, and we would like, staff does recommend that we change the environmental category to an agricultural category. an agricultural category. And then secondly, appoint the two applicants, Monica Rosenthal and Hank Lesher, to the agriculture seat as well as the at-large position for the Middletown LPEC.
All right, anything else to add?
Nope.
All right, anyone from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right, bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Monica Rosenthal to the ag position and Hank Lesher to the at-large position for the Middletown LPEC.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And then we'll go back to 6.6, so you can explain that since it's 10 p, or 10 a.m., sorry.
Thank you. Discrepancy was noted in the numeric values in the staff report after the posting of the agenda. So out of an abundance of caution, staff does request that this item be continued to a time and date certain.
Okay. To be determined.
Johanna's looking for a good time. Yeah, absolutely. April 8 at 10:30.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
I have a feeling he has the same question, so I'll let Lloyd ask just in case I ask the wrong one.
Your board may seek clarification from staff if the date that was identified would be consistent with the noticing requirements for purposes of sending out a notice with the corrected amounts.
This is not the same as a public hearing notice where it has to be posted 10 days. We will notify the, the property owner regarding that correction as well as the new date.
Okay. All right. Do I have to open it up for public or we're good since we're moving it? Lloyd?
Your board can open it up for public comment, and then since the, what's being discussed, at least in part, would be essentially, would lead to a motion to continue this item to a date and time certain.
I'll open it up for the public real quick. Anybody from the public on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
What was the date and time again? April 5?
April 8.
April 8.
At 10:30.
I move to continue item 6.6 to April 8 at 10:30 a.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to 7.4, consideration of update on accomplishments and conclusion of Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. And Director Turner?
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. The Board of Supervisors originally established positions for the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force on June 7, 2022. At the risk of dating myself, it was originally intended to be a six-month process. However, like Gilligan's Island, it turned into a little bit of like a three-hour tour. And here we are, two years and nine months later. Staff feels that we have received sufficient direction from the task force to transition over to our actual drafting of the ordinance. This new ordinance creating or establishing Article 73 for updating the cannabis regulations will proceed through the normal process and will have additional opportunities for public input and participation prior to coming to your board. I really want to thank all the members of the task force and the public that have hung in with us for the last two years and nine months for their participation and their input. And no action is required from the board at this time. We will just go ahead and consider the task force tasks to be concluded.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Yeah, just have a brief question. You spoke about more public ability to comment on this before it goes through the process. It's mentioned, I believe it's in the memo, that it needs to go to the Planning Commission prior to coming here for final approval. I know we've heard of some updates. Will there be a open session dialogue prior to finalizing what will be brought to the Planning Commission here at the board? Or do we need to talk to you individually?
The ordinance is going to go to the Agriculture Advisory Committee first. That is a, that is a hearing where the public can attend. It will also then go to the Planning Commission in a notice public hearing for recommendations prior to coming to you. At this point, I do not have any other open houses. We've had multiple open houses over the last few years as well as two years and nine months of public meetings for the task force. So I do not have on my timeline any sort of open house again.
And I wasn't speaking open house. I just mean here at the Board of Supervisors level because I know that typically we review a potential ordinance, send it off to the Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission brings it back to us. If we make changes, does that have to go back to the Planning Commission? So I'm trying to see what's the most efficient way to do that, to get our full input prior to it going to the Planning Commission.
So I will take the input received from the board on all of the task force activity to date. That will be part of how the draft ordinance will be, will be written. If you would like to do the process for a notice of intent, to see that draft ordinance prior to it going to the Planning Commission, I could do it that way, too. It's just not, not the, the way I usually do it.
All right.
Well, I think I would like to see a summary maybe before it starts going through the channels.
Sure.
Because that's what you're asking.
I just don't want to break something after it's gone through so many levels of review where, no, absolutely not, this is not going to work for us. And so I don't want to finalize it here, but I want to make sure we don't do huge changes to what comes back to us.
I'd be happy to prepare a summary to bring before the board that just shows kind of, these are the new streamlines, these are what's updating to the state, this is new, this is a policy decision that I'm still going to need from you. Yeah, we could do it that way. That'd be fine.
Yep, that works.
Did you want to see the draft or just a summary?
I, I think, I think a summary of what, it takes a while to do all the drafting of the overall ordinance, I think highlighting what the changes will be compared to what we have, getting our, because to be honest, I've just been holding back, giving my personal opinions to allow the Cannabis Task Force to do its work before it comes back to us. And so I want to make sure that I have the ability to provide my feedback in order to maybe, if there's consensus from the board, to shape what the revision looks like prior to going through the review. But a summary, not an actual, here's the ordinance document.
Right, so your, your input would be in concept as, as to be reflected in the draft ordinance? Yeah, that's fine. No problem. That'll be quicker, too.
Can I get a copy of the original, too? The current?
Current Article 7?
Yeah, the one that's in place without the changes, so I can see the changes.
Like a redlined? It won't exactly be a redlined, but I can put it all in a table. What we have currently versus, if we have anything currently, and then what we're thinking about.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense, thanks.
Yeah, I also like the idea of having the summary come back before it goes to Planning Commission. So other than that, I appreciate the update and there's still going to be lots of opportunity for public to comment as it goes back through the process.
Indeed.
Thank you.
All right. Yep, that's, I was going to say that, too, but you guys have already covered it. So is it with that we need a consensus to do that? Okay. We have it, I, yeah, so just wanted to, all right.
And while I believe in the memo, it says no action, I would like to take action to dissolve the ad hoc or the task force so that it's official, that it's done and over, if the chair so. I would like to see that.
She said she did dissolve it. What's that? The mic? Oh, yeah, no, I was going to open to public pretty soon. But, yeah, I, other way. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? And I know that there's numerous online, there's comments from ecomments stating a lot of what's been said as well, but I see one in the room. I don't know if you, anyone from the public would like to come up and speak? All right, we have quite a few.
Good morning, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen and Supervisors. My name is Margal Kambara. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public input on the topic of the Cannabis Task Force. I do agree with the decision to disband the task force, and I do applaud members of the task force who have served, you know, selflessly to produce an ordinance that would serve all of Lake County. I wish to voice some concern about public comment, though, in the avenues that are available to us, the constraints will make it difficult to cover the topics that really need some in-depth discussion, such as odor control for outdoor grows, and such as, you know, the environmental and environmental regulations and other, other concerns. So at three minutes a pop at the various agencies, you know, Planning Commission and the Ag Commission, I don't know if the public will really have an opportunity to express or to have its concerns addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Chair Crandall and Supervisors. I also just want to start by thanking CDD staff and members of the public who worked really tirelessly to improve the cannabis ordinance. This was a long and thankless job, and a lot of people spent a lot of time on this. So I just want to recognize that. I also want to just, you know, thank staff because this, this forthcoming ordinance update has the potential to really profoundly impact the future of cannabis in Lake County and indeed the overall economic prosperity of the county. In 2024, Lake County's revenue from wine grapes fell by 34% and statewide wine grape revenue was down 29%. At the same time, Lake County is building a reputation as a region that produces high-quality cannabis, creating new opportunities for property owners and farmers throughout the county. In 2023, 2024, the cannabis industry generated more than $2.5 million in cannabis tax revenue for Lake County. Given this backdrop, streamlining the cannabis ordinance is more important now than ever. As statewide regulations continue to evolve and have changed much since the original ordinance was written, streamlining this is vital now to fostering resilience in our local industry. As noted in the recently commissioned Department of Cannabis Control Report, quote, "Working to lower local restrictions, taxes, and fees for licensed cannabis businesses would support the licensed market. Local costs affect decisions on where to locate and how resilient businesses are to down years in the market. These barriers to entry create advantages for unlicensed businesses." In addition to the ordinance update, I know we have our work cut out for us this year with an update to the cultivation tax structure, which will also be vital to the continued success of this, of this industry and our local economy. Again, thanks to all the task force members and the staff for their, for their work on this process.
All right, thank you. Oh, sir, did you, did you say your name?
Apologies, Andrew Dobbs Kramer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Harper, Lake County Farm Bureau. I just wanted to express my gratitude for Mariaa and the team, the team of staff that have worked really hard to facilitate our Cannabis Task Force meetings over the past two years and nine months. To be frank, I'm not sure what I'll do with the three hours I've gained every other Monday, but I've got quite a long list of ideas. So anyways, thank you to everybody who participated in the task force. It's been, I think, a really good example of representatives from multiple industries coming together to work efficiently and productively on things we may not agree on. So, so I just wanted to thank everybody who's been involved, staff included. LCFB will look forward to seeing the final draft and providing comments as we move through that process.
Thank you. All right. Some more public comment on this item? All right. All right, if you can unmute.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors and Chair Crandall, county staff, this is Nora Dalbaka, soon to be outgoing president of the LCCA. And I'll echo what my fellow task force member Rebecca Harper just stated, which is a lot of gratitude, immense gratitude for, for my fellow task force members and staff for shepherding us through what, what was most of the time a really informative and incredible process to, to watch the community come together to, to put these, these recommendations before you today. It has been a long time. I don't, like Rebecca, I don't know what I'll do with my Mondays now. But I really want to thank my fellow task force folks who, who came out for, for years now, and I've gotten to know them, and the county for putting this into our hands and trusting us to, to put this together. This industry is incredibly vital for the county, and as the county faces potential threats of cuts of federal dollars moving forward, I think the industry is going to be even more vital for the economic impact that it brings. And the industry is thrilled to be here. So thank you and look forward to seeing what staff puts together.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? All right, if you can unmute and please state your name for the record.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Hello, I'm Reverend Julia Bono from the Rainbow Church of Living Light, and I would like to wish you a good morning, supervisors. I also wanted to express my sincere thanks to the task force and their patience in working on this important cannabis ordinance. I have been concerned about the recent presence of anti-cannabis individuals at task force meetings, but I am glad that the ordinance drafting process has now been completed so that the cannabis industry can move forward in Lake County. I look forward to seeing future information from the departments on how it will be passed through the government process. Anyway, again, my thanks to everyone involved.
All right, thank you. Any others Zoom? All right. All right, if you can unmute and state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Jennifer Smith. I'm an LCCA member, a task force member, and a local cultivator. I just want to again echo the statements by my fellow task force members, Nora and Rebecca. It was a great example of different community members and viewpoints coming together and being open and willing to educate themselves about the crop and about how regulations affect the actual farming of this product. I do look forward to seeing the future draft. We worked really hard to add in zoning for license types that don't exist. And the balance of that development is really the bulk of what's left and hoping to see in alignment with the state regulations as we update our current policy, which is, needs an evolution since we do have state policy now. Sorry, GPS is talking in my ear. But again, thanks to the task force, thanks to the board for trusting us with this process, and thanks to the, the county staff that has put in enormous amounts of time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, if you can unmute, you have your three minutes.
Hello, board, Chair Crandall, Supervisors, Erin McCarrick from Clear Lake. Of course, echoing everything that everyone has said, it really was an amazing example, and the staff is just stellar, especially towards the end, balancing the task force with the 2050 community planning. So thank you so much for doing that. I do hope that there is either a window of time or an open email address or some way to hear the voices of the, some of the items that we, that the task force didn't quite get to, maybe like retail. Fund distribution company in Clear Lake, which is in a different jurisdiction, but deals with the retail all across the county. So I just hope that they have a moment to voice what they would like to see in the ordinance and what would benefit them or not. And also, as always, welcome, as a member of the LCCA, welcome any of the Board of Supervisors to come visit any of the facilities within our county and see how they contribute to the community, see how they contribute to the budget, see how they're employing folks, and, and also talk to the consumers. There's a lot of consumers in Lake County who are pretty happy to have this industry here. So thanks again. And again, if there is any way for the other industries outside of cultivation, or farms of the industry outside cultivation, to contribute to the conversation of the drafting of the industry outside cultivation to contribute to the conversation of the drafting of the ordinance, please let us know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public input? All right, I'll close public input and bring it back to the Board. Lloyd, just a quick question. I know there was a request to conduct a vote. Are we able to do that with Brown Act in mind, or how would we go about that?
Your Board has that option. I mean, in line with the county's ad hoc committees under the committee's policy, your Board may take action to, there are motion to dissolve the cannabis task force if your Board wishes to, cannabis ordinance task force if your Board wishes to do it.
All right. Yeah, if that's the case.
If nothing more, Mr. Chair, I move to dissolve the cannabis task force.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to seven point, I'll go with five. Consideration of temporary public health officer appointment and professional services contract with Anju Goel, MD and PH for a term of six months for an amount not to exceed $49,860 for the term of the agreement and authorize the Health Services Director to sign, Director Arton.
Good morning, Board. How are you guys doing?
Very good.
First, I want to take a moment to introduce you guys to our new Deputy Director of Finance and Administration, Lisa Faraco. I think several of you are familiar with her, and I wanted to bring her up here because she, this was part of her first projects that she worked on. So as you guys are aware, Dr. Duen has submitted her resignation letter that will take effect March 31st, so that will leave us with a gap in our services if we don't fill a health officer position. Dr. Goel came recommended to us from Dr. Duen as a temporary fill-in. She has extensive background in healthcare and has been a health officer for numerous other counties, as you can see with the resume that I sent you guys yesterday. We took about four to five weeks to reach reasonable terms with her, $165 an hour for every hour worked and $10.50 an hour for on-call. That will allow us to have full coverage in the absence of a full-time employee health officer. The contract is up to six months. However, with the terms agreed to, we expect to hit the ceiling around three to four months, so 12 to 15 weeks. And we will use that time to recruit a full-time health officer as an employee or reach terms with a longer-term health officer. And I do have a candidate in waiting that I'm very excited about, that I hope you guys will be excited about as well. So with that, we are seeking your approval to get this process going. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just appreciative of the fast action and having a short-term and also a long-term plan already set, so looking forward to it.
And I will be gone for two weeks in Japan, and Lisa and Rainey will be working on an RFP RFQ as backup while the recruitment is also going on as well.
Japan.
Anyhow, no. I'm going to go see the cherry blossoms.
Awesome.
Nintendo. Oh, yes, I'm going to go see the Nintendo Museum too.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the public for any comment on Zoom. All right, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve public health officer appointment and professional services contract with Anju Goel.
Goel.
MD and PH for a term of six months for amount not to exceed $49,860 for the term of the agreement and authorize the Health and Services Director to sign.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you.
And congratulations to Lisa. We're going to miss you at AAA.
That's what I was thinking. I was like, why is AAA here with?
I know, me too. I was like, are you guys?
We're all super excited about having her.
Okay.
One loss, one gain.
Yes. All right, so we'll move on to 7.6. Consideration of resolution authorizing the delegation of authority to Public Services Director to approve and execute change orders for the agreement for construction of the Lake County Sheriff Administration facility renovation project. We have Director Lars Ewing here.
Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. As your Board is aware, the construction of the armory is underway. Actually, it's going very well. They are ahead of schedule, which is always a good thing because unanticipated circumstances come up, and that's probably a good segue. We aren't aware of anything at this point that is overly significant. There have been some things identified that we're working through. But stepping back from this particular project and to talk about construction projects in general and the administrative process to manage those projects, what we're considering now is how to manage change orders. Change orders come up, the need for change orders come up, and in construction, they come up, and you typically need to address them right then and there. Currently, the process that we have, the county has and your Board has in place is change orders need to come before your Board for projects that are approved by your Board. That's pretty straightforward. However, the process to get before your Board, as you are likely aware, does take some time. And so there is a method in most construction contracts to do what's called, and it can be used in different terms, but essentially a field change order where we have our county staff that would coordinate with the contractor, come to an agreement of the necessary change and the cost for that, and direct them to do the work. And then we would be coming, I would come to your Board, for example, and say, please approve this that was already done. And it sets us up, not for failure, but it just, it seems like we can streamline it a bit where we have delegated authority. The request that is here before your Board for this project alone is delegation of the Board's authority to me as the Public Services Director to approve change orders, and we can talk about the nitty-gritty details about what would be allowed. But it, there would still be the oversight by county staff, construction manager, capital project manager, myself, and others. But we would be, we wouldn't be coming to your Board for each change. The approval, the actual execution of the change order would be under my authority, and I would come back to your Board on a quarterly basis and update you on what was approved. Currently, some counties do have this authority in their code. That's something that I am interested in looking into. But there is a code in the state public contracting code, I believe, that allows for the method that is spelled out in the resolution. It is a little clunky, I'll say. It has specific dollar amounts, which we can talk about here. But for, at this point, I didn't want to come talk about a, you know, broad-scale overarching, you know, county code change, so I'm approaching it just for this project alone. So to simplify it here, the state code allows for, for this project, to simplify it, it would be for it, an individual change order would not exceed $210,000, and the aggregate change, the aggregate of all the change orders would not exceed $610,750. And the reason for that is that's the way the state code is essentially written. It provides for those numbers that are calculated out. That is for the actual contract change order itself. Let's talk about the funding. If we can, we do have funding available for change orders. The project itself has appropriations for the contract that was approved with right contracting, but also for contingencies. So the contingency amount that we have was about 10% of that contract cost, so we would certainly not be exceeding any contingency amounts that your Board has already approved. So no need for additional appropriations, simply your Board's delegation authority. So there's three items that are bullet-pointed in the memo that really simplify what is being asked. It would be no change order executed through the delegated authority will exceed $210,000 as I referenced before. The aggregate amount would not exceed $610,750. And then lastly, I would present, the Public Services Director would present a quarterly report to your Board summarizing the change orders that would be executed under that delegated authority. So I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just two questions. One, I believe it's in the memo that there'll be a report of all the change orders as long as it's below those numbers, or else you'd be bringing those to us. What's the anticipation when the project is done that you would bring all that to us on an annual basis? What's your anticipated process?
Quarterly is what I'm anticipating right now. If we approve this now, here we are in March, I would come back in give or take June if my quarterly math is right. So I expect that.
And I apologize now that you said quarterly. I'm thinking that did, it did mention that in the memo as well. Just a quick question, since we are overriding a code, I know it says it in the resolution title, authorizing delegation, and it says it also within the therefore. Just a question, I guess, to county council, is there a need to write what code we are overriding? Because it doesn't, it works in how I read it, but there's still a conflict of, yeah, state law says this, and we're allowing that to happen through state law, but it's not saying that we are overriding our county code. Do we need to write in there that we're overriding that specific county code, or is that just good enough as is? I'm suspecting it's good enough, but I thought I'd ask the question.
Your Board has that option to add an additional reference of along the lines of Public Contract Code Section 2142 subsection B would, in effect, supersede or somewhere along those lines the current local provisions, and we'll have to have a specific side of that for that references purchasing, purchase orders under local ordinance or the Lake County ordinance.
Is it necessary, or is it good as is when it doesn't reference our code, even though our code is more restrictive? I just wanted to check in on that.
Yes, so it isn't necessary, but for added information, your Board certainly has that option.
It's not necessary, then it's not necessary.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think I referenced earlier the potential and interest to look at this at a broad scale, not for all construction projects, but maybe for them. I have not initiated those conversations with admin. It would affect, well, essentially, three other departments along with admin, the departments that manage capital projects. And so if it is of interest to your Board to investigate that, it is of interest to me. I'll say historically, when I first started with the county and Public Works about 15 years ago, there was a standing item on every Board agenda of construction change orders. It wouldn't even be specific to the project. It was just a standing item, and that was, if something came up on a Friday or even a Monday, for example, the Director of Public Works or one of those other three departments could come to your Board, explain it, and it would be approved. And so what was a, either in the moment, a one, two, or three-day item, now it's a three-week process. So there's reason why that's not allowed now, so I recognize that. But I would suggest that it is, there is a benefit in looking at that, so long as your Board is willing to consider the delegation authority.
Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you. I'm 100% in support of this. I think it makes for a lot more efficiency, but I also wanted to get on the record that I do support bringing it back, another item for making this a permanent change to be more efficient. And if it's already budgeted and we have contingency, I don't see why we need to approve every change on these projects. That's what I said.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Ditto on that last part. I'm interested in seeing something. If there's a way to turn it on on this project, we'll follow this rule instead of the standard rule. That way, different projects, depending on the type and the urgency of the projects, can utilize that little better efficiency model.
Good. See you.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to make a statement that we do support Lars in his pursuit and also in exploring with other departments.
Great. All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Let's see, I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thanks.
All right, resolution passes. Is there something else I need to do with regard to the last thing that was said, or that's, no, we're good?
There is direction, your Board can do it by consensus, direction of staff as outlined by Vice Chair Rasmussen.
I think we had.
You have consensus. Right, it's there. All right.
Great, thank you. And I will not be going to Japan, but I wish I would.
All right, so we'll go to 7.2. Consideration of Amendment 1 to Agreement for Professional Services between the County of Lake and Lake County PEG TV. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you, Chair. So the PEG videography agreement has been utilized heavily by the municipal advisory councils. Very thankful for that. And there was the new Burns Valley Advisory Council, and now, as of yesterday, the new Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council that is utilizing that. And our first contract was last fiscal year, so '23-'24, it was for $10,000. As you may recall, there was an amendment to increase that towards the latter part of the year. We did not change the contract. We stayed at $10,000 just because we weren't certain what the overall cost would be. Right now, we're estimating that it may cost an extra $7,000 to be able to finish the year with the additional advisory councils. And I'm only changing or requesting to approve the changes to the fiscal year '24-'25. Once we have a better idea and concept of what the true cost is for annual, then we'll go ahead and come back and amend the '25-'26 and '26-'27. According to my conversations with admin staff, there are buckets that we place some of our cannabis taxes. 30% is dedicated to economic development, housing, and risk reduction. There's approximately $1.5 million in there, and that is the funding mechanism that would allow for the $7,000 amendment.
All right, Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, my only comment is that it's Big Valley, not Burns Valley.
Oh, so sorry. I needed to get a little bit further away from home, sorry.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to follow up on, I appreciate PEG getting out to Scotts Valley. We were the last council who had not been broadcasting, and as of last night, we're available on Zoom and YouTube, so I appreciate that, and I support this amendment.
All right, 100%. I know how much it's helped. I know we got, well, everything's pretty much running a little more smoothly now, and it's getting a lot better. It's helping out. I know that there's comments and concerns from public who want to watch the Max or be a part of it, so just really, really glad we still have this going.
Since you mentioned that, I do, I want to say two things. One, one of the biggest additions that we added was we now have the ability to bring our own internet access, no matter where we are, which makes it very easy. Before, it was just kind of iffy whether we would get good internet connection. We did not increase the cost to the equipment for our contract. That is something that we are taking on ourselves, and it's been a huge game changer for us. We're able to access the internet basically anywhere and everywhere in Lake County, which is great. The other one is, you mentioned, oh, yes, certain town halls have certain rules. For example, the Middletown Town Hall, Area Town Hall does not want to utilize Zoom. That is not up to PEG to make decisions on how the town hall is run. That is up to each individual town halls, because I know we get requests from the public, but those requests need to go directly to the town halls if the public members wish to see something different. We are following what the councils want, and that is it.
Vice Chair?
I'm ready to make a motion after, that's all.
I was just going to say that it's been a huge asset, and I think it's doing a really good job. I'm happy with PEG.
All right, I'll open it up to the public if there's any comments.
Rainbow Church of Living Light.
All right, if you can unmute. We have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. Reverend Julia Bono here with the Rainbow Church of Living Light. I would just like to say that there is not by any means a consensus in the Middletown Area Town Hall regarding the lack of Zoom, that it is actually just the majority outvoting a minority who does want to see Zoom. And we feel as though that our rights, according to the American, you know, the Disabilities Act and other reasons why people should be able to access and interact with their government from home, that our rights are being trampled upon. We ask that the Board of Supervisors consider overruling the Middletown Area Town Hall's majority vote to remove Zoom from its meetings. We do feel that that is an infringement, and... And we would ask that our concerns be taken seriously and that the Zoom be restored to the Middletown Area Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? All right, I'll close publicly and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment one to agreement for professional services between the County of Lake and Lake County PEG TV.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in, one second.
I apologize, Mr. Chair, unauthorized the chair.
Unauthorized the chair to sign. I amend my my motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's all of, yeah, yeah, I was just making sure that's all of the others. So calendars, we'll go ahead and see who wants to start out.
I could do it.
All right.
Even though I'm not actually ready, but I believe I have LAFCO tomorrow, depending on when it ends. I also have a NACO Arts Council meeting later on that afternoon. There is the first year's AVA meeting. And I believe we have almost a completely different AVA council this year. So that'll be exciting to get new faces in there. There is. I have an IFT and EMCC meeting after Judge's Breakfast on Thursday. Continuum of Care, Performance Review, Food Policy Council. And then finish the day, actually, I will not be going to Clear Lake City Council. I believe if that's still on the books, that you and I will be going together to Cloverdale. Then we have our training on Friday. Coming back on Monday, getting ready for our Tuesday meeting and meeting with our CAO. I do want to highlight something, and I obviously I messed up and probably should have been part of the, I think it was Supervisor Pyska, correct me if I'm wrong, the Fire Safe Summit that occurred in Middletown. I probably should have been there. Instead, I was trying to do a town hall to create our own Fire Safe Council and Fire Wise Communities, but it was very well attended. We had presentations from our Lake County Fire Protection District on the new property review program, inspection program that they have that is available to everybody so that we can find out what does our defense space look like. And then based on the paperwork that we receive, again, not to say that it will help you with your insurance, but it's something that you can utilize if you feel that you are not getting the right rate. We got a lot of interest in people that want to create their own Fire Wise Communities and those that want to help also create the Umbrella Fire Safe Council as well. And so we're planning to continue. I do want to just put out some thank yous. Supervisor Owen, thank you for being part of putting all of this together with me and working. Since it's covering Lower Lake as well as Clear Lake, we're using the Lake County Fire Protection District area map. Mayor Kramer was part of it, City Manager Alan Flora, Autumn Lancaster, the Fire Marshal from Lake County Fire Protection District, who's amazing, and then Chief Sepeda as well. And don't want to forget Teresa Harberth, who is the President of the Lower Lake Community Action Agency, to try and bring in all of that activity and interest so that we can get going and do the work that others have already been doing that we've not been able to get going in that area.
All right.
Let me just start.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, okay, so last Thursday, we had the Lake County Fire Safe Council in Conocti. We had the, I was also able to meet with the Caltrans meeting that's called the South Deal, Lake County Recreation, and Fire Wise Town Hall, which I was a little bit late for from the others, from the other meetings that I had all day. And that was last Thursday. We have, I have coming up tomorrow, Blue Ribbon Meeting in, I think it's the Riviera. Let me see, where is that? Nope, it's in Upper Lake at the Tribal Hall. Thursday, I have Lake County Agriculture Meeting at 10:00. Caliomi Water at 4:00 and Hidden Valley Fire Wise at 6:00. And then on Thursday, I have Board of Supervisors Training. I think that starts at 9:00 on Friday, and then I'll be leaving town for a couple of days. So I think that's it.
All right. Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, the Conocti Fire Safe Council Summit was Wednesday. We had an incredible turnout. We had Cal Fire. Oh, yeah, local OES, state OES, just an incredible group of people. So it was wonderful to catch up with everybody and kind of talk about a lot of the funding freezes and how that impacts local projects. And then from there, we went directly to the Fire Water for Fire Suppression Town Hall, which you got to stay the whole time, so you can report out. But it was an incredible gathering of fire, county, water purveyors, and cities. So more to come on that. And then I drove to Chico because there was a CSAC Regional Meeting, and I was on the panel Thursday morning for that. It was on disaster response and disaster recovery. And Secretary Johnson from Health and Human Services from the state was there. And so that was a really great, long day, talking about county's role and resources from the state and federal government. Unfortunately, what's becoming really clear is that, you know, a lot of the disaster response relies on federal safety net programs. And so looking at the reduction of those and how we will be able to respond, and the state will be able to support responses. But without those safety net programs, if that comes to pass, there will, well, I'll just quote the secretary, she said, "We will have to reprioritize." So that is just. This is not a not a great thing to have to consider. But Cal OES is looking over all those programs to find out how that will impact local counties. And then I got home just in time for the Sunrise Rotary Meeting at 5:30, but I missed the Lake Recreation Agency. Were you guys both able to go? Okay, great, so I'll catch up. And then Friday, we had the Tree Mortality Task Force Meeting. Yesterday, we had the Risk Reduction Authority Meeting, but we didn't have a quorum. But we were able to meet and report out. So that was really helpful. This week, it was kind of a crazy week. We have LAFCO in the morning. I have an interview with Bill Grudy from Conocti Fire Safe Council. And then we afternoon meetings with LAFCO, the RRA Biomass Subcommittee. And then I have a call with the Home Hardening Team in the late afternoon. Hopefully, I can make all of those work. And then Thursday, we have the Ag Advisory Committee, which we are having a hitch presentation on. And then hopefully, I'll be able to get out of that in time to make the Home Hardening Field Trip, because we are celebrating the 20th house being finished, which is really exciting. So I'll go over there for the rest of the afternoon, and then Colby Council in the evening. And then Friday, we have our training. And then we also have Workforce Alliance, right? At 3 o'clock, we're going to train.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that.
Mm-hmm. See how that works.
Got more difficult.
Mm-hmm. The Coal Creek Advisory Collaborative is meeting also during that time. So I'll have to get an update on what's going on with Coal Creek. But I do want to say that because it rained so much last weekend, the mountain bike races for the NorCal League, which goes all the way down to San Luis Obispo, were the races were canceled due to weather, and Six Sigma has stepped up. And so this weekend, we are going to have many thousands of people come to Six Sigma for the races. They'll all be arriving Friday, and the NorCal teams will be racing Saturday. And the Central Region teams will be racing on Sunday. So they, this all happens usually in the fall for, I'm sorry, in May for the championship. But we get an extra dose of all this economic boost this weekend. So if anyone's available, Supervisor Owen, it sounds like you'll be out of town. But anyone else, come to Six Sigma and see, I mean, it is incredible when you see that many people converge. And then I will take my Monday call with CAO Parker from the Carbonizer, because we are having a big, or maybe I could switch. If I could switch with Vice Chair Rasmussen, that would be great. Because we're having a big meeting at the Carbonizer Monday with a lot of the groups who have been working on putting that together. So that's it for me.
Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you. A few things, since we, I didn't report last week due to the long meeting. I had five tours with departments up until this week. Attended COC last week. The Lake APC LTA was canceled. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have BEVAC last week. Attended Children's Council Meeting. Behavioral Health Advisory Board Meeting. And then this week, I've got North Coast EMS Board Orientation and then a meeting. Had Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council last night. I'll attend the Lakeport City Council Meeting tonight. And I apologize if I didn't hear you guys are both going to be at LAFCO. Okay, I Supervisor Sabatier and Pyska. I want the Blue Ribbon Committee conflicts with that over in Upper Lake. I'll be there. That's supposed to be a five hour meeting, so be there most of the day. And hopefully, we'll get the meeting dates situated so that board members can be at future meetings this year, because they're set up right now for Tuesdays after this one this week. Then I'll have EMCC and the ITF Meeting, Supervisor Sabatier on the 20th also. And I was going to check and see if you were still going to be there, because I might have to leave a little bit early. And it's down in in your district, I believe.
You're talking about the EMCC, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will be there.
Yeah, because I have another meeting up here, which would be the first juvenile justice coordinating meeting for the year. And then right after that, the North Coast DMS Meeting, which I'll attend by Zoom, because we're allowed to do that. And then I believe I'm still covering for you and Supervisor Sabatier, Chair, for, on the Tango Mic on the 20th at 6:00 p.m.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. I know you guys have important work to do over in Sonoma County, so. And then Friday, I'm looking forward to our board all day special training meeting. And that wraps it up for this week.
All right.
I had forgot one thing, that Congressman Thompson will be in Middletown on Friday, March 21st, from 11:00 to noon, coffee with the Congressman, if anybody's interested about any issues that you might have in your area.
All right. I'll start out with the Water for Fire Suppression Town Hall that we had last week. I came in and discussed, I know that you had to step out for the other meeting. It was really productive. The fire chiefs and all the water, you know, the water providers were there. It was really engaging. A lot of folks were concerned. They're worried about how often and how unfortunate the situation is when we have fires. The water providers usually use a lot of the water that they provide for drinking because of the fires. And so they talked also about the hydrants potentially using a form of storage. And so just a lot of discussion around that, how construction requiring sprinklers for fire suppression is causing some, you know, just some issues here and there. So just having all of the like subject matter experts, like the building code officials there, talking about the meter hookups and whatnot. It got so robust, I think it, there's a couple others. I think we hit them, but they didn't get further into depth because it kept going, you know, on some of that. And then other people had their comments. And they were all very, you know, good comments. They were talking about how the tanks, the NFPA tanks, 2,500 to 5,000 gallons. At times, there's issues because they, the way that they're filled up, kind of, what do they call it? It pulls it in or, you know, suctions. And so they were talking about other options and things like that. And so so we're going to continue to have more discussion on this. I think they're setting up a doodle pole to see when the next one is, because it was it was very productive. Just trying to find, you know, proactive measures so that we can be ready, knowing like right now, especially that day, there's a lot of water, you know, being, you know, it's rain. So collecting water at that specific time. Yeah, so and, you know, just thinking of out of the box types of solutions. And it really did, really did help. The discussion went really well, and everybody seemed very, you know, satisfied with with that type of meeting. So really good to have. Looking forward to the next one as well. So that that was that for that meeting. I know it started at 2:00, and I was like, wow, it's going to 5:00. It it went by because of all the discussion, yeah. It went by, you know, you just like snapped, and it was already 5:00. So and then last week, we had a really good meeting. I know there was some work done in October or so when it came to the Upper Lake levees. And so the tribe and Water Resources had had meetings then. And it, I think, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, where the communication breakdown went. But, you know, we had a meeting here where Habemislal came as well. So in a proactive measure and also for other reasons, we had a meeting with Water Resources, County Council Representative, his name was Jackson, Angela de Palma Dow, Terry Logston, met with representatives from Habemislal and really went over what was going to happen when it comes to the Clover Creek Hitch Habitat Project that's going to be worked on when it comes to the levees at Middle Creek, the Clover Creek diversion. So really, really good, robust discussion, trying to understand each other's terminologies when it comes to cultural resources and how their requests were put in place. And some of their verbiage and whatnot was, you know, requested from the county, vice versa. So really was productive. I think getting ahead of it before the project comes. I think a lot of times, this discussion happens closer to the project, and then it becomes very, I don't know, it just becomes very convoluted or just there may not be an understanding. And so it's better to get it ahead of time, and I think we're really, really in a good place. So just wanted to just mention that because we're having also a TPO meeting. We've been meeting with the Tribal Historic Preservation Officers once a month. And this is the type of thing that we're looking at, trying to be in a place to have these more robust discussions so that there's no, once the project happens, there's no issues with anybody having the thought that maybe they weren't included and whatnot. And so especially when cultural resources is is covered by California law in some instances. So it's just really better to get ahead of it and just appreciate being a part of that discussion. So tomorrow, I have, how does this, what is this doing? Okay, so I have the GSNR Golden State National Resources Board Meeting. It's on Zoom, so I'll be here doing that. The AVA Meeting, I know that you and I, and then I think you're one of the, you're one of the alternates. Did you want to go to that or?
I am, but remind me when that.
Wednesday at 1:00.
Yeah, it's at 1:00.
I think that's Blue Ribbon, isn't it?
I'm going to be at Blue Ribbon.
Okay, so I, yeah, so then it'll be you and I. And then so I have a West Region Town Hall Meeting Thursday, Tribal Historic Preservation Meeting, that what I was just mentioning will be, it's usually here. And then I'm going to be, I think we were having the AAA, but it got moved to April. So in turn, I will be meeting with Ally or, yeah, Alexandra or Ally. She came to the presentation last week with the UCC. And so I've been meaning to meet with her and go over to that center in Hopland before I head down to Cloverdale, where Supervisor Sabatier and I will be going to that meeting to talk about the Potter Valley Project. Of course, we have the workshop Friday, the special meeting we'll have Friday. And then, of course, Monday, I have the CAO call and, you know, and then back here Tuesday. And so I think that covers it all, right? Anybody forget anything? No? All right, it looks like we can now go into closed session. I think we have some time here. So I'll read those off. What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah, we will. Just let me read these off real quick. So first item on the closed session is. So first item on the closed session is public employee, 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Child Support Services Director, 8.2, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator Carlos Torres, County Negotiator Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, Casey Marino, Pam Samick, and Diana Rico, and B, Employee Organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSSEA, and LCSMA. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, McSorley versus Lake County. 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2E1, One Potential Case. With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you for attending the meeting today.